Morning, everyone. Good morning, staff. And good morning Wichita. I will call this meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Public agenda. The public agenda allows for up to five speakers to have five minutes each to address the council. No action will be taken relative to items on the public agenda, other than referral to the city manager for information as necessary. Speakers will please state their name and address for the record. A time clock will display the speaker's remaining time to speak. Order and rules of decorum will be observed. We do not have any scheduled speakers on public agenda this morning.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Are there any individuals in the audience who would like to address the city council? I see none. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent agenda items 1 through 27.
Council members, are there items to be pulled?
I'd like to pull item 4A, just for discussion.
I'd like to pull item 4C for discussion. And I don't believe anyone from MABCD is around. Is that correct, city manager?
Mayor, that's correct, although the director is on his way. He's just running late. I apologize.
Then I would like to also pull item number 7. Any additional items to be pulled? I see none. I will move to approve consent agenda items without items 4A, 4C, and 7.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Seven zero. We will begin with 4A.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to give Gary a chance to just chat about this a little bit. It's pretty exciting. We can actually start making some revenue off of some of our processes down at the sewage treatment plant here, possibly. So just to catch some of the other council members up on this item, could you just give a little brief background on it?
Sure. Mayor, council members, Gary Jansen, Public Works and Utilities, and appreciate the opportunity to highlight this, as you said. A byproduct of the digestion process with wastewater treatment is creating methane. Right now, it's just flared off to the environment. We have, in the past, looked, as many other organizations like ours have, trying to find a way to capture that methane for use in natural gas processes. And we've even considered the same when we started down the path as BNR project, but there were just too many other things to really look at. So it's a good opportunity. This item before you this morning is an agreement with CDM, who's the designer for BNR, to help develop procurement for what will be a public-private partnership. We've evaluated different options. We could try to take on capturing and sale of this methane ourselves. Capital costs are considerable upfront. There are other communities have developed processes which we're considering here. CDM's been a part of, so they've got some expertise. That there are, through this partnership, there are companies that'll come and provide all the capital, they'll provide the equipment, they'll own and maintain the equipment, and we do realize revenues off the sale of that methane to companies like One Gas and others who can utilize it for other purposes. So that's where we're starting now with this, is to develop that, and I think it's gonna, hopefully, it works out well for us. Secondary part of that, too, is through our fats, oils, and grease program, and the disposal of grease in particular, we think there may be an opportunity, as some communities have done, and we've talked to some vendors about the opportunity to basically sweeten that gas, the ability to make even more gas, and maybe create additional opportunities for restaurants in town to have a more viable place for disposal of their grease. So that's the second part of this. I think the capture of the gas is something that's more likely to happen. Second part with the grease is hopeful right now, but assuming your approval today, we'll get moving on this as quick as we can.
All right. Just let us know what the city can do to help.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further questions? I see none. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I move to approve consent agenda item 4A.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Seven zero. We will now move to consent agenda item number 4C. Will someone from Parks, please come forward and talk about this agreement? I know that this also is part of the process that helped with the NCAA March Madness Fan Fest this past weekend, and so I've gotten a lot of questions regarding the process, as people have now seen that these public assets, like Old Town Square or Nafsker Park, are opportunities for people to utilize. I've had some schools ask about tailgating opportunities at public parking lots. So if there's someone that can speak on the behalf of the process itself, it would be helpful for community.
Now, I've asked Isaac to come down, who manages that process for the Parks Department, but I can give a general overview of what the process looks like for using Nafsker Park. So we do have an application process that's through special events that Isaac manages. When it's 250 people or less, there is a certain criteria for what's required as far as with street closures and police and fire support. When it's over 250, it requires different qualifications to be able to use that space, and it's all determined by the number of people that are actually there for each of those events. Typically, when we have those, we work in conjunction with WPD to make sure that we have the approval processes go through for what's required there, and determines the number of people that are there, how we manage that process. But anyone that's interested in using that space can actually fill out the application that comes through that approval process. We do have two different pay structures. One is a standard for a business that does it, and then a reduced fee that we do for nonprofit organizations that use the space as well.
What are those costs for the applications?
And I don't have directly in front of me, but I believe the entire day for rental is $1,000, and then there's a 25% off for a nonprofit organization that takes it down to $750. And I'll be able to make sure on that as well.
Thank you. So my question, then, for this Old Town Farm and Art Market. I know it's very popular, and I looked at this contract. So per use is $95 per use. Can you talk about, obviously, you just mentioned it's about $1,000 for a rental regarding these public assets, but this is a much more reduced fee. Can you talk about the reasons why this specific contract is $95 per use?
And I don't have the specifics on that. I apologize. Isaac has been the one that's managing that process for me, and I can see if I can get him here to be able to speak more specifically about what that cost is. So if you give me a moment, I can actually get him here so he can answer those questions for it.
I know that that contract is actually $95 per use, but the total amount will be $3,515 for the full rental between the months of, or the dates of April 5th, 2025, to December 20th, 2025, without November 29th as a date that, I guess, will not be utilized. And so I wanted this for full transparency for people that wanted to know how to utilize our public asset spaces. I think oftentimes, people assume all they have to do is contact one of the council members, and that is not true. There is a process, and it's a process that is handled by the Parks Department. And when there are great opportunities like the farm and art market, which, again, draws a lot of people, and we like that, we just want to make sure that people have a fair share of being able to utilize spaces that are public. But if we can just get a clarification on the application fee, and then also the justification of why $95 per use? Thank you. Any further questions from the council?
I'm just wondering if the $95 is like per booth for the farm and art market?
No. It's per date.
So there's an additional $95. We'll just let Isaac explain.
Good morning. Isaac Gunnar Haskins, Department of Park and Recreation.
Hi, Isaac. Thank you for handling the application process. Can you talk about how people in the community who are interested in utilizing a public space and renting it out, how that process actually works, and what are the fees?
Specifically for the farmer's market or for community events in general?
In general, and then we can talk about the specific item in just a second.
Okay, because the farmer's market's handled a bit differently. They're licensed separately than they are as a community event. So community events are defined as any sort of public event occurring on private or public property in which any, and excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm recovering from a cold. 250 or more people at any given time, five or more vendors selling, that does not apply to food trucks or nonprofits, alcohol consumption on public streets or sidewalks, or street closures. Those applications should be, with a street closure, need to be submitted at least 45 days in advance. Without street closures, they can be submitted at less than, up to 30 days in advance. Once the application is received, I will review it, reach out to the applicant, collect any outstanding or supporting documents that are needed, and then I will release it to the Community Events Committee, which includes 10 other city officials and departments. Approval process typically takes anywhere from three to four weeks, sometimes longer, depending on the type of event or any of the aspects. As far as the farmer's market goes, it's handled differently. Farmer's markets are not required to get a community event permit. Old Town Association is a bit unique in the way that the lease agreement kind of covers the fact that they, that is their market license. Normally, a farmer's market application gets submitted to the licensing department downstairs here on the first floor, and then that gets approved, I want to say, by six city officials, and I have to double-check that I don't handle those ones directly. The farmer's market, they pay $95 a day for the plaza rental. That also includes the use of Rock Island and mostly. Normally, the plaza would go for $165 a day, but just for the farmer's market, we've given them a discount over the years. We did increase that by $10 a day this past year. Any other general questions?
Thank you. That was my question, the justification of why it was a reduced cost. I wanted to just make sure that cost recovery is being achieved in this very contract.
I would have to defer to Public Works on costs. I'm not.
Sorry, I may have missed that last part.
Is cost recovery being achieved with $95 per day?
On the, this is with the farmer's market? I'm not sure. I'd have to take a look at that and get back to you, probably, because I'm sure, based on where we've gotten to with our other permits, I'm sure we've got a justification for that cost, but I'd have to look and see what the most recent ones were, and I apologize, I don't have that right here.
If we can have that follow-up, I would appreciate it. I think oftentimes, we do things that community doesn't understand why there's a reduced cost for one specific group versus another group, and out of full transparency, we should be able to justify the reason why. We appreciate, and I love that we have a farm and art market, but we are providing reduced costs, and there's a reason why, and if it is, I just want to make sure that cost recovery is being achieved. Any further questions? Isaac, one more question. How much was the application fee for business versus nonprofit?
So the fee for community events does not differentiate, change between nonprofit or for-profit. Your, the actual application fees, you're looking at a $25 application fee. For a single-day permit, it's $50 per day. A two-day license, two-to-three-day license runs $200, and then a license for four or more days is $500. A street closure fee has just come with an administrative flat $25 fee on top of that. So your application fees in general are not very much.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate it.
And where the nonprofit fee goes in is for the actual rental of the facilities itself that the 25% applies to.
Thank you, Reggie, and thank you, Isaac. Again, we want to allow the community to understand the process, so if they would like to utilize a public parking lot or a public park, that there is a process, and again, they don't have to just believe that we have the magic wand for them, but I've gotten those emails, and I then send them to the council member where that specific location is, and then I also copy the community service representative, who then, I hope, continues that conversation with the potential applicant. So thank you, and I look forward to the additional information about cost recovery. Thanks to both of you. Any other questions?
If I could add into that, it's easier, you know, you can just go to community events on our website, but I also want to add in just my voice to the conversation of cost recovery is important, but partnerships with community organizations that bring about these opportunities like farm and art market or some of the festivals, that economic impact is a little greater than a formal cost recovery here for the city. So while we may see some cost recovery, I think it's worth some of our investments in these public assets that we, as the taxpayers, own, that we benefit the community in that way. And while there may not be a direct cost recovery here, all the businesses in the farm and art market are actually benefiting from having this in that space. So it's not always going to be a full cost recovery, especially in parks. This is a public amenity that we have, and that we try to get some revenues back, but also it's more of a public benefit to have some of these things.
I really appreciate that conversation, because over the weekend, we had a lot of different vendors for the NCAA, and they didn't understand that the city of Wichita provides these additional, whether it's security or services, for the benefit of the greater community so that there can be economic impact in our community. So I highlighted this really to make sure people understand not just the process, but also that the city of Wichita is very much in, hand-in-hand with economic development and economic impact. Thank you. Any other questions? I see none. Anyone from the audience who would like to speak on this item? I see none. I move to approve consent agenda item 4C.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Seven zero. Do we have MABCD? Perfect. Consent agenda item number 7 is in regards to abatement of dangerous and unsafe structures. I've gotten several questions over the last year regarding how someone complains about, complains about a dangerous or nuisance property, and how they can follow up with that process to boarding it up, and then to finally, at the very worst situation, demolition of the property. Could we just explain that process for community? Thank you.
Good morning. Kaylin Nethercott with Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. So two parts to that question. First, with regards to the assessments that you see in front of you, those are for structures that were removed as part of an emergency demolition process. These are typically those that are burned so badly that we cannot secure them, and that they're an immediate hazard and a danger to the community, either for re-entry, if they've been illegally inhabited, or a very collapse, in danger of falling into the street, that kind of thing. So the assessments that you see in front of you are typically for structures of that nature. Now, to answer your question, when the public complains about a house that is in a moderately or severely dilapidated state, the very first thing that we're going to do is to open a housing case and try to resolve that, sort of, if you will, at the lowest level possible, which is inspector and property owner. And that process, we will work through that. Generally, it's successful, not always. So I think the public sometimes thinks that we're going to go straight from a complaint to a demolition, because they will, they will literally ask us, "How can I get this house torn down?" Well, that isn't exactly how that works. So, so it's going to result in a case. At that point, they can track that through MABCD's customer service portal. It's assigned a case number. They can search by case or address, either one, and then they can follow along with the progress of that. Now, if, if the house, the housing case remains unresolved, and again, we're going to try a multitude of things. We're going to try to work with that property owner, and there's some caveats to that. If it's a problem that can be resolved with a little bit of help, we're going to influx our code enforcement liaison resources for that, if possible. If it's a manageable problem, that that will actually help. We can try environmental court also, to try to just incent that property owner a little more heavily to do some repairs, take care of it, maybe even sell it, change ownership. That's an effective way sometimes to resolve problems. As a very last, as you said, a very last-case scenario, then we'll, we will enter that property into the formal condemnation process. Now typically, and I do want to make this clear, formal condemnations are, we do not generally ever pursue those with occupied structures. So that is, that is not how that works. Now, I'm going to back up and add a little, another caveat to that. Sometimes the complaints we get from neighbors are on structures that are occupied. Their owner occupied, they've fallen into disrepair. It's obvious that the owner doesn't have the physical, financial capacity to do what they need to do. That's where we can typically use our code enforcement liaison services to great success. It takes a little while, and the owner has to be willing to let us help them, but that's where we typically use that program the most effectively. So does that, does that help answer your question?
Does. Thank you very much. Again, I know that community members want sometimes a structure to be completely demolished immediately, and there is a process, and I know the frustration, and we get those emails, so then we send them to the correct council member where it belongs, and the community service rep, who then, I think, contacts you.
Oh, yes, they do. Yes, yes, yes. One thing I would encourage, that if, if a property's condition changes, we would encourage that continued communication from the community, because we will go back and check at designated times for rechecks, right? We have a process for re-inspection, re-verification, but we would always welcome if that neighbor sees a change in the condition of that property that we may not be aware of. So we can always check again at a different time throughout that process, and we welcome that communication. Okay?
Thank you very much, Kaylin. Any further questions? I see none. Appreciate it. Anyone from the audience who would like to speak on this item? I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I move to approve consent agenda item 7.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts, dated March 24th, 2025.
Good morning. Mayor, City Council, Josh Lawber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened yesterday on March 24th, 2025, for the following items. We have for engineering, the Greenwich Vehicle to Infrastructure Kellogg, the 29th Street North, for Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated, for $983,095. For purchasing, we have Argon Gas, for Mathis and Tri-Gas Incorporated, for an estimated annual usage of $1,501,728. We're redirecting this. For purchasing, we have the trash and recycling containers and collection for Transit, Police, and Library Contract Change Order, for Waste Management of Kansas Incorporated, for an amended amount of $37,705.92. We have the trash and recycling containers and collection for Park and Facilities Contract Change Order, for Waste Connections of Kansas Incorporated, for an amended amount of $18,378.09 per year. We have the furnished compactor trucks and open dumpster services for Neighborhood and Bulky Waste Cleanup Contract Change Order, for Waste Connections of Kansas Incorporated, for an amended amount of $201,935.08 per year. We have the network equipment for Advanced Learning Library, for Logicalis Incorporated, for $361,507.97. We have the Etsy library shelving and installation for the Rockwell branch, for H21 Group Incorporated, for $280,000. We have the Canopy Media Streaming Subscription Agreement renewal, for Canopy Incorporated, for $45,000, for an estimated pay-per-use program. We have the Arc GIS Software Maintenance Renewal, for Environmental Systems Research Incorporated, doing business as Esri, for $94,836.02. We have the Lucidity Asset Management Software Renewal, for Central Square Technologies LLC, in the amount of $115,473.28. We have Uniforms Contract Change Order, for Industrial Uniform Company LLC, doing business as Logo Depot. We have the actual prices and itemized clothing items in the bid report. If you wish to see those, we're requesting your authorization to accept the price increase. We have the Wichita Fire Department radios and equipment, for Motorola Incorporated, for $273,045. This is how to become a vendor with the city. This is our purchasing calendar of small resource partner events and items that the city is hosting. Shout out to the Contractors Forum with our Public Works and Norport colleagues at the Wichita Water Treatment Plant admin building on tomorrow. These are open public opportunities out on the street today, and I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you, Josh. Questions for Josh?
Josh, slides 5, 6, and 7, with the waste management?
Yes.
It's a change order. Was that bid out originally, and this is a price increase?
Yes. Great question. So the process that we did was we bid these out in 2024, established contract pricing. What we will see is we'll see department requests for additions and modifications that happened since the original bid. The hesitation I have of unilaterally approving these is because of the volume and the number of changes that occur that we're bringing these back to you. So you'll see some that are less than 50,000, for instance, but that's an estimated usage, where the specific price may be $200 a week for an eight-yard container. Because it encompasses the entire city organization, it's really difficult to pin down that this is only going to be in 50,000.
Okay, so the rate per container is the same? You just got more containers?
Let me, so there's specific changes on each of these contracts, and each of them specifically were. For 5, for Transit, Police, and Library, we have an amendment to change the Advanced Learning Library to add two, an additional two-yard trash bin to Group 3. There was a request for Parks and Facilities to add the Brooks Landfill location to Group 2, so that would be $471 per year. And then the last item was the Neighborhood and Bulky Waste Cleanup. There was a 4% price increase. The city added potential contracted rates of tire and mattress pickups, and this was due to, in the course of the pickup events, volunteers would submit mattresses and tires. So this would accommodate that in the contract now.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks for the questions.
Thank you.
The only question I had was slide number 13, regarding the price increase for uniforms. What specifically increased?
Sure. So in the bid packet, there was, there was a multitude of items. I would be misleading if I said there was specific one singular items, but there was seven pages of different items, and for instance, you'll have instances of a item number H, HCF Canvas Outback Hat. There was zero price increase, and There was zero price increase, and then you have an instance where there was Port Authority Dry Zone Grid Polo and the True Royal Color was a 5% increase from last year. So I don't want to mislead you and say every single price, but there were seven pages of changes that occurred.
Thank you. Any further questions for Josh? I see none. This does not get public comment, so I will move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements.
Good morning, Mayor, City Councilmembers, Paul Gunson and Public Works and Utilities for the record. This morning, I have one revised petition for your consideration. The signatures on the petition represent 100% of the improvement districts, and the petition is valid per Kansas statute. R F Edition and R F Second Edition located in District Two. On March 25th, 2022, the City Council approved water improvements required for new residential development. The developer has submitted a revised petition with revised budget to reflect current market It is recommended the City Council approve the revised petition and budget, adopt an amending resolution, and authorize necessary signatures, and these improvements will be special assessed. And I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for Paul? I see none. This also doesn't get public comment. I move to approve the petitions for public improvements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
We'll start with councilmember appointments. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I have quite a few, and I have sent these to the clerk. For the Animal Service Review Board, Pat Thompson. For the Bicycle Pedestrian Board, Monte Shaw. For the Board of Park Commissioners, Eddie Faunastock. For the Cultural Funding Committee, Naomi Thompson. For the District Advisory Board, Ton Nguyen, Camilla Burrell, James Groff, Stephanie McCurdy, Tracy Adams, Erin Miller, John Baker, Timothy Johnson, Faith Martin, Bruce Gass, Christopher Broderick. For the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Advisory Board, Carrie Rinker. For the Ethics Advisory Board, Lucrea Taylor. For the Food and Farm Council, Megan Greenway. For the Historic Preservation Board, Stephen Klein. For the Library Board, Charles Schmidt. For the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, John McKay. For the Police and Fire Retirement Board, Joseph Kui. For the Transit Advisory Board, Chris Danyer. For the Airport Advisory Board, Alicia Sanchez. For the Wichita Citizen Review Board, Brandy Willett. For the Wichita Employees Retirement Board, Sean Seamster. And for the Wichita Sustainability Integration Board, Tammy Ray. And for the Wichita Cedric County Board of Zoning and Appeals, John McKay.
And I will have mine. The Airport Advisory Board, Scott Stiles and Brian Roloff from Cedric County, both of these, these individuals. For the Ethics Board, Al Higdon. And for the Sustainability Integration Board, Dylan Thiessen. I move to approve the board appointments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven zero. Councilmember comments?
Mayor, I'd like to compliment Public Works and the Police Department, all the vendors and staff for the event around the arena for March Madness. I think it was unbelievably good. What a positive image. I don't think you see that at other cities. I think it's, you guys did a really, really good job. So I just walked around there and just really enjoyed it, and people are enjoying themselves. People from out of town, you could tell they're enjoying themselves, and I made a good statement for the city, and I sincerely thank you very much. Thank you.
It was good to see Master P in Wichita.
Did you see him?
I saw a picture of him.
I would just like to thank everybody for coming to my District Six coffee. We had a plentiful conversation, mostly about animal control and the drought, so that was super fun. And then I appreciate the people that joined me for the Broadway Corridor cleanup, so thank you Parks and Public Works for helping make that happen.
I'm gonna have to thank for our breakfast, too. So my, my wife made breakfast in a pan, and there was bacon. I made bacon, grapes, cinnamon rolls. It was really good. We had 86 people in our breakfast. So it was opening, the pre-opening for the West Link Library, and it is absolutely gorgeous. Compliment librarian staff, they did a very, very good job, and people were very impressed with it. So good job to library staff and Jamie, her leadership. It's really nice. I encourage everyone to go look at it.
I just have to say, Vice Mayor, where is the food tray for the workshop today?
You had to come to breakfast. Your loss.
Thank you to Councilmembers Johnston and Ballard for hosting breakfasts this past weekend, and obviously with the N C double A. I wanted to just make public that I will be writing a letter of support for a rebid for Wichita to host the N C double A first and second rounds again, so this will come from the mayor's office, and I look forward to writing that letter of support. I see no further comments, so we cannot adjourn because we have workshop, so we will now turn it over to City Manager Leighton.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we have two items for discussion. The first one has to do with our street maintenance program, specifically about dirt streets. That was an issue the council looked at in 2024, changed their policy somewhat, and we want to talk to you about the implementation of that new policy. And then also, there were questions about the supplemental concrete program, and we would like to get some direction on the 2025, 2026 program. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gary.
Thank you, manager. Mayor and Councilmembers, Gary Janson, Public Works and Utilities. I'll be very brief. I was gonna start this off and, and give a summary that the manager just did, so I don't need to repeat that. But with this being all Public Works and Utilities items on this workshop, I suspect this will be one of the best workshops you've had, so we'll try to make sure that's true. Paul's gonna start off and talk about the dirt streets, as the manager mentioned, kind of resummarize the policy and where we're at, and one specific item related to how streets might be paved in the future, then Aaron will talk about supplemental concrete
Thank you, Gary. Okay, a little bit of background. Wichita has approximately 160 lane miles of dirt streets. Many of these are in established neighborhoods, and the historical approach has been to pave the streets following a valid petition, which finances the improvements by special assessment. In 2022, the City Council, during budget deliberations, resulted in a funding for dirt street paving and set two priorities for determining the order in which streets are paved. The first priority was dirt streets near schools. Streets within approximately one block of the schools would be paved first, and that was anticipated to take approximately four years to complete. And the first streets that were paved were in 2023, and those were around Isley and Gardner Schools. And then the second priority was dirt streets in disadvantaged neighborhoods, and that would be priority based on areas within the highest percentage of individuals living below the poverty line. Last year, during budget deliberations, again, this August 20th, 2024, the City Council voted four to three to reallocate money from the dirt streets program, with the exception of $4,289,765 that would complete the streets in the vicinity of schools by the end of Savings would be redirected to the OP Three program, and this is reflected in the adopted 2025 through 2034 C I P. Residents could petition to add, to be added to the dirt streets programmed year, provided 80% of the residents on the block be in favor of paving. And each year, the last couple of years since this program's been in place, there's, bids have been getting approximately $675,000 per lane mile is what we've been getting, and about one and a half lane miles are constructed each year. Where we are to date, program year 2025, all streets identified to be paved are within the vicinity of schools, and the City Council approved that program on December 10th of In 2026, there are all but three streets are within the vicinity of schools, and those streets that are not are 22nd Street from Erie to Chautauqua. Estimated cost to be $66,000. Park Street from Burnett to Ailey, approximately costs $50,000, and Park Street from 26th Street to Burnett, again, around $51,000 for the anticipated pave that street. Going into these a little bit further, 22nd Street from Erie to Chautauqua, there are four resident owners along that roadway. 80% would require all four signatures to move that forward for paving. If it was, looked at 50%, only two of the signatures, property owners would be required to sign the, the survey and send it back to us. Similarly, to Park Place, Burnett to Ailey, again, there are four resident owners along that street. Again, all four would need to sign to move the project forward, or two out of the four would need to sign if 50% were, were required. And similarly with Park Place, 26th to Burnett, same situation we have there. The process that we would go through would, staff would send a letter to each property owner of record prior to June 1st of each year, with responses due by, back by July 15th. This would give staff time to modify the budget going into, you know, if money needed to be shifted from the OP Three program to the dirt streets program, we can modify that as we go through the budget season. The letter that would be sent out would include a map similar to what I had just shown, and the, we would also include the dirt street paving survey, and that could be submitted back to us by either mail, hand-delivered, or they can email that back. The property owners along that block could, could identify a champion to circulate that survey, or they can send it back individually as they wish. Once we get that back, staff would verify the percentage of their affirmative responses and move the projects forward accordingly to be paved or not, and then the subsequent, as I mentioned before, the subsequent OP Three and Dirt Street programs, assuming even if one project is moving forward, presented to City Council in the quarter four of each year will reflect, reflect the responses and respective impact to the budgets. And I will turn it over to Aaron to go over that, and then we will stand for questions before moving into the next workshop item. Just as a quick reminder, the adopted C I P does have the money that was formerly allocated for dirt street paving coming back into the OP Three starting in 2027. We have modeled both ways and just wanted to revisit that. This slide demonstrates that, you know, with that money staying in OP Three, we're going to be able to maintain a lot more of the existing paved streets. We're projecting about 545 additional lane miles over the course of the eight years that we have that funding in the OP Three through 2034. And then we've looked at the impact on asset value for the same thing. There, I mean, there's quite a bit of difference here, ranging from, you know, 2026, I think you're looking at, or sorry, 2027, it's around a 20% difference between the funding levels in 2031, it's 30% potentially. So we've modeled the asset value both ways. The black line would be the one that was most recently presented to you in December with the 2025 OP Three. The red line would be if that funding were redirected back to dirt street paving starting in 2027. Over the five-year period, we're looking at about a $54 million difference in asset value. We're still gaining ground generally both ways, but a lot more of the funding stays in the OP Three. And with that, we'll pause for any questions regarding dirt streets?
Mayor, if I could also, I want to just add, there's really two issues that we're bringing forth today. One, just to make sure that you're comfortable with the 80%. When we're dealing with short sections like we are, that's basically 100% requirement for the petition, so we want to confirm that with the council. And then the second thing is we want to know if you're comfortable with the notification process the way we've outlined it. So those are the two issues, along with any others that you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. I feel comfortable with it as presented. I think it's a win for our community, especially seeing the impact on asset value, and I'm thankful that you highlighted that as well. So thank you for the presentation, and I feel comfortable with it.
I, I would, I feel comfortable with it, but I would like to, to lower it to 75%. So if one, sometimes households don't respond to anything and are against everything, and that would hold up the other three residents getting their street paved, so I, I, I would like to have staff prepare to, to change it to 75%.
I am, I'm okay with the notification process. I would actually like to see it drop to 50%. And my reasoning is, as I was knocking doors about potential really big poles in one part of District One, I had a homeowner and two renters that did not care to engage at all. They didn't care, the renters didn't care because they could move. One of the homeowners was leaving, and everyone else would have been impacted if something like this were there. So 50% would allow two people, especially on 22nd Street, that street's, the street that people have wanted to be paved for decades now, and now it's an opportunity. And if one of those people does not sign, or two of them does not sign or say they want it, that street won't get paved. So I would like to see it drop to 50%. Further, I think the money should go back into dirt streets. We made a commitment, I think we should keep it. We were making progress. Every street that we have paved that's a dirt street, I've heard nothing but great things from those residents. The impact on the schools has been great because no more of that dust has been blowing, and I think we should go back and keep our commitment to paving those dirt roads, like we said. If there are people who don't want their roads paved, they can say that, because I know one of my colleagues, I can't remember who, said there was somebody who didn't want their road paved, but I think we should keep our promise and go back to funding, paying for those dirt roads.
Can I ask a follow-up question, maybe for staff? If we drop the threshold from 80% to 75% or 50%, will we be able, that's a policy decision, right? So we're not making that decision today, obviously, but is that something that we would be able to see what the financial impact would be? I think that would be a really, would there be, and, and then before we could make that decision, could that be reviewed?
If, if you went to 75% and you were successful, then if you go back one slide, that'll show you, no, just, no, no, no.
The graph one, yeah.
We're just, the one, next one.
That one, yeah.
Yeah, that's basically, that's assuming that you could get three out of four signatures, then we're back down to the red line.
Okay.
So it's, it's, we can't tell you unless we know who's actually going to participate.
Sure, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about this slide? What's the big split that we see in 29? Because that's where it still, that's where it seems to go in opposite directions there.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I've noted that the, the little note there is incorrect. That should actually be 27 through 2031 and $20 million, but the, the split is where we've got, we have money allocated in the, in the C I P, in the adopted C I P to dirt street paving through 2026. 2027 is where it moves back to OP Three in the C I P, so that's where the different, the two lines start to diverge at that point.
Yeah, it just in 29, it looks like there, it just goes in opposite direction. Yeah, it just in twenty-nine, it looks like there, it just goes in opposite directions there. So I, I was just curious why there's such a big split starting in twenty twenty-nine.
Oh, for the red line?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know specifically. The model's quirky because, you know, we're, when we have zero remaining service life in the model, we're basically saying we have zero value there left in that street, and it's a hard cutoff in the model, so you can have big splores of streets that are just barely above one year and then transition below the next year that can make differences like that.
It'll also depend on when you get the benefit of the improvements that are made, because starting in twenty-seven, all of that money is projected to go back to OP three, not to dirt roads, where now you've got that significant amount going to the schools, the dirt roads around the schools. So the, my guess is what's happening is the investment you're making in twenty-seven then starts to show on the value of twenty-eight, and that's where it tails off the other direction.
Yeah, my thoughts on it, I, I agree with Councilmember Johnson for the most part. I do appreciate Councilmember Vice Mayor Johnston talking about at least seventy-five percent. That makes sense. I also understand that it's tough to have that, you know, we saw this with the survey, we see this all the time. I'm not going to lie, I'm susceptible to this as well, like it's snail mail, and, you know, either my wife reads it or it goes into the shredder, one or the other, so I do think that's a little tougher to get that higher rate even though people might want it. So just my own personal opinions there.
I see no further comments. I'll add my comments. I, I am in favor of what staff has already presented, so the confirmation seems appropriate, and also the notification process.
I would, I would just add, just for the record, as we talk about building trust in government, people who've wanted their streets paved for years or for decades finally had a program to do it, and now we're changing it, and those same individuals, while they may not be the loudest, now look at us like we're breaking our word, we're paving their roads, and that's how at least one resident in District One feels.
City manager, does that give you enough direction?
Mayor, I believe it does. When we bring this program back to you, then you can formally vote. We'll go, we'll go ahead and ask, we'll send the information out, ask for the petitions to be submitted, and then when you approve the Twenty-Sixth program, you can determine whether it's an eighty percent threshold or some other variation on that. But right now, we'll, we can't do it formally, so we'll keep the program as it exists.
Moving on to supplemental concrete paving, last year, the city council approved a new project in the adopted CIP that allocated two million dollars per year to the repair of poor-conditioned concrete streets. This was in recognition of the fact that about twenty percent of our network, twenty to twenty-five percent of our network is concrete, a large percentage of those concrete streets are in poor condition, but because they're so very costly to repair on the order of five times or more than asphalt streets, we just weren't really gaining a lot of ground on them through the regular program. So, so the adopted CIP includes this two million dollar project to, to try to gain greater ground on those. As presented in the twenty twenty-five OP three and approved by city council, we recommended apportioning that two million dollars based on the proportion of concrete streets in each district. As shown here, that did kind of spread the, the impact across the city. Districts two and five have very low percentages of concrete compared to the others, so there's not a whole lot going on in those districts, but there is some work via this approach. When we presented the OP three in December, we were asked to take a look at an alternative worst-first approach citywide. So this approach goes into each district with the amount of money, with the amount of money proportional to the amount of concrete street in that district, and then from there we're, we're working them worst-first within the district. We did look at an alternative approach for twenty twenty-five that would have been worst-first citywide. This is what that would have looked like. It was heavily concentrated in districts one and districts four. After our discussion in December, we went back. The OP three does not handle concrete streets very well, unfortunately, so we have to approach those kind of outside the traditional OP three, but we did go through and we did kind of a five-year manual, man, sorry, manual model of what that would look like both ways. And these are the results here. Probably the big, biggest difference is just the, the concentration of work in particular There's not a whole lot of variation, you know, between districts one, three, four, and six in terms of the lowest PCI in each district, but for the purposes of this, we did go straight worst-first by the number. The worst-first citywide approach was, it was interesting that it tended to bring up the lowest overall PCI to forty-five. But again, the, the trade-off was we weren't doing, you know, as much work in districts three and in district six in particular. That's really all I have on that. I hope it's helpful somewhat, but.
It is helpful. I did have one comment from looking at the projections in the, by district versus citywide, the actual lane miles preserved is actually a little bit, just a tiny bit, higher than the citywide, so from nineteen point six eight versus nineteen point five nine. So despite the fact that the lowest remaining starting CPI is still at forty-three in this district-wide, you are preserving more lane miles with the by district.
Right, right, and the reason for that is some of the, when we do it proportional by district, we have some streets that aren't in as bad a condition that we're, that we're treating that way, so the, the dollar amount invested is a little bit less.
Are you able to share which areas in all the six districts, maybe some of the major intersections that will be preserved?
Yeah, we could, yeah, I think we could dig that out of the, the model that we ran, yeah. These would be primarily, if not exclusively, residential streets.
That would be helpful. I know that each of the six council members will get some sort of preservation in their district now, and if we could see a before and after, I think people can see the difference between investing in their specific district and a specific street and how that improvement was conducted by the city.
Sure.
I'd just like to say I'm still in favor of citywide, and it's not because District One gets all of those streets. I said that before, I knew that, Bob can attest to that, just like I said with the dirt roads, because District One didn't benefit as much. I think the citywide approach is better, taking care of worst-first in general, not just in, in each district, and the starting PCI seems to be higher if we did that, but I think it makes a bigger impact if we do that, saying I've always said we're only as strong as our weakest link, and if our weak link isn't there, just go ahead and fix that and take the citywide approach, and then we would start targeting all of those things. Just my piece.
I can agree with that.
If we stay with this approach, we will bring it back to you every year, because I think what you'll see is the gap will start to widen, and at some point, the council may want to more seriously look at the worst-first citywide to be able to make an impact on some of those streets that continue to deteriorate that are problematic. Right now, as the mayor pointed out, it's not that significant a difference, you know, it's two points on the PCI, but I do think that spread will continue to grow. And the good news is either approach is a vast improvement from the thirty-nine where you're starting. So it was good that council initiated this con, this special program for concrete streets, and I think to that point, we don't have to wait, we can just do it now. That's all we have, Mayor, on that. Thank you. Thank you, Paul and Aaron. Now we have the Water King.
So I've got some information to, to provide an update on our drought response, what we're doing for water supply planning in the future. This will look familiar to nearly all of you. We've been to five of the six, six district advisory boards in the last month or more. I've been to District Two breakfast, other public meetings, talking about the drought, making sure everybody knows where we're still at. So I'm going to hit through some of this fairly quick, because you've seen this before. If you've got questions, I could certainly come back to, but I want to get to a point within this and talk about an update on our new water treatment plant and where we're heading with other planning efforts. So I always like to remind everybody, we've got two water sources with Cheney Reservoir and the Equus Beds. Cheney is the source of our, our current issue with our drought response plan being certainly well below normal. I'll talk about that more in just a moment, and you can kind of see relative to where those are to the new water treatment plant. We typically will utilize fifty-five to sixty percent from surface water supply with the balance from groundwater. There's some limitations on our current water treatment plant through the treatment process that creates that situation. You've heard us talk about the flexibility and the value added with our new plant that it can treat more groundwater, and I'll come back to that in just a moment. Always want to mention El Dorado continues to come up. I hear about it on almost a weekly basis about why we don't use El Dorado water. Long story short, we've done some studies over the course of time. While there is some water available, water rights available from El Dorado reservoir at the point in time when we would need water from El Dorado during a regional drought, so impacting Cheney also, the water is not going to be there. What we would need, we would drain the reservoir in a very short period of time, it's not viable. The watershed that feeds El Dorado reservoir is much smaller than Cheney, so it also takes longer to fill back up. So I just wanted to mention that again, to get that asset on a regular basis. Even if we could find what seemed like a reasonable cost to bring a pipeline, pumping, and everything else, the water's just not there. You know a lot about our current water treatment plant. Just Tuesday night, the council approved moving forward with a project to be able to bring this plant back on, on, online on an emergency basis. Appreciate that action, we're moving forward with that project as soon as we can. You all know we're a regional water supplier, provider to one in six Kansans get water from the city of Wichita. That includes one hundred and fifty thousand residential and commercial customers in Wichita and eleven wholesale customers, which is eight neighboring cities and three rural water districts. The reason why I've highlighted Derby and Valley Center is from a conservation standpoint, there is some help on the way as far as additional water availability. Derby has fairly considerable untapped water rights. They're looking at building a treatment facility in the next two to three years to be able to treat that water. I think, what I've heard from them so far is they think that they can help with high demand months. So, you know, our drought response plan is really focused on outdoor discretionary watering during the summer months. That's the point in time when they would be able to provide additional water, which will help us the most and really help go a long ways towards drought resiliency. Valley Center is also building a water treatment plant they expect to have online sooner. While Valley Center does not use as much water as Derby, anything helps, they've also got their own water rights that they have not utilized, so that brings value to us all in, that's more water that we can use that has, is not being used right now.
Gary, can I ask a question about the water rights?
Yeah.
Where are they pulling their water from?
Both of them are in the vicinity of, of where they're at. I know Valley Center's right there, very close to their water treatment plant's going to be at. They have existing native water rights there. Derby has what they call the El Paso water rights, also within Derby proper, that they have had the rights to for some time. So basically, within each community, those water rights are already there. I'm going to talk more about the Wichita Water Works in here in just a moment. You've probably, you've seen this picture numerous times. We've talked about the Cheney pool condition, what's driving this, where we're at with our current drought restrictions. As of last week, the water level is still seven and a half feet below normal pool. That's held pretty steady since November, but we would expect through those months to not see near the evaporation we do as the temperatures start warming up. A little bit of snow helps, it didn't amount to a lot. Luckily, we had the record rains in November that brought the elevation up a foot. Right now, we're expecting, we are projecting stage-two watering restrictions to remain in place through all of twenty twenty-five. Our goal right now is to hold off stage-three as long as we can. We do not see stage-three yet in twenty twenty-five, however, that depend, that's, that is counting on some level of normal precipitation, so we're going to keep a very close eye on it, make sure we keep everyone up to date. We need to have some spring rains that would help us keep moving forward here. I want to mention real quick about Cheney Reservoir itself. Not unlike El Dorado, I hear a lot about, why don't you dredge Cheney? We have been very proactive, and with the support of the city council and funding provided by the council over many, many years, we have had watershed protection programs in place that has limited the amount of sedimentation into the reservoir. The last study that the Kansas Water Office did showed that it might be somewhere around five to, five to ten, seven percent of the capacity has been lost from sediment, which is pretty unheard of, especially for a reservoir this size and this watershed. So dredging is lose-lose situation, it's expensive, you got to find a place to take the material, the return on investment is never there. You know, we did some quick cost estimates, we got to an extremely high price, and we only gained an additional month and a half of water, so it's not a viable, it's not even something we're going to evaluate going forward. The one silver lining in this drought is we are currently making repairs to the dam. The bottom right picture you can see is some of the repairs that are going on right now. Kind of got off to a slow start because the cold weather would not go away. Even with where the lake level's at with the wind, it did, you get water up there, it was freezing and causing problems, so the work couldn't be done, but they're moving forward now, so that is funding that was approved by the city council and CIP. We had the plans ready to go, the permit ready to go. In case this situation came up, we do have a separation clause in the contract. In case we get big spring rains and this lake starts to fill back up, we will not lower the reservoir at this point. We would plan to come back at a later time and finish the work, but starting at the bottom and moving up, so we're catching the most critical part now, and we're buying ourselves time as they start to move up the bank. I wanted to show this real quickly. We, we worked closely with the Kansas Water Office and the governor's office back in the fall of last year to make sure that the governor's drought declaration map was updated, because late last year, it did not look like this. There were no emergency counties designated. We were in a unique situation. I think all of you know, last fall, as we started heading towards considering stage-two, we found out a lot of the public kind of sight unseen, doesn't see Cheney, doesn't even realize what Cheney's there for, and, and make, making everybody aware of, of that's where our problem lies. Same deal as with Kansas Water Office, when they started talking to them, they came and looked at, what they do is evaluate inflow into the reservoir. The inflow over the last year or more into Cheney reservoir is the lowest it's been in almost sixty years, which goes back to all the way when it was built. So that tells you the condition that we're in, even with a six-hundred-thousand-acre basin, we're just not getting rain in the right spots. This is important, I believe, as we move forward, sorry, I'll stand up for one more quick minute, to potentially have discussions with state and federal legislators about funding support. I don't know what that looks like, we've started that discussion, it's hard to know what might be out there. At some point in time, as we move forward, we're going to have to keep a really close eye on our revenues based on not selling as much water as we projected, but we'll come back to that later. I think it's just good to have this in place now. This is the four stages of our drought response plan, and this is quite a bit of information, kind of all packed into one. Our drought response plan was codified by the city council in twenty thirteen, coming off the heels of the last major drought that we had, and it was set up to focus on, I mentioned before, outdoor irrigation, discretionary outdoor irrigation. Our goal with this plan, certainly in stage-two, is to cut that watering amount in half, which I think we showed we could do for a couple of months last year. Stage-one calls for voluntary water conservation measures. Each of these stages is triggered by a twelve-month running average of the conservation pool at Cheney. So based on that seventy to eighty-nine percent, when we got below eighty-nine percent for a twelve-month running average, stage-one was activated in January of twenty twenty-three. We did a lot through the media and through our comms team and public outreach, letting folks know, here's where we're at, here's where we're headed. It's time to con- here's where we're at, here's where we're headed. It's time to consider voluntary conservation. A big part of that was our internal conservation plan, which can be found on our website. I'll show that in just a moment. We did a lot across the organization. With an organization our size, there's plenty of opportunities to save water. So we have an internal conservation team that includes a representative each department that still continues to meet on a regular basis. You know, you can look at, Gulf did a lot with changing their mowing patterns, watering, grass types on golf courses. Parks certainly did. All of our facilities, we backed off to once a week watering at that point in time. We've started looking to more drought tolerant landscaping. We're just not even moving forward with any land, new landscaping since last fall. A lot, I've done a lot of really good things because we had heard from the public, we will conserve as soon as you do. And so we wanted to make sure everybody knew we are. And here's some examples of things that you can do. And so I think that's gone well. We also have our rebate program still in place, continues to be in place to help us do anything that we can to provide more water efficient devices through these times. Stage two, again, based on the twelve-month average, once we got below that sixty-nine percent, was activated on August fifth of last year. That moves to mandatory water restrictions, restricting outdoor water usage to one day per week. We have not come out of stage two since then. I heard some, from some people over the winter who thought because it wasn't hot out, it no longer applied. We started in stage two on August fifth and we remain in stage two and we will until some point in time that we come out of it. I, so this restriction also says that you cannot water between ten AM and eight PM. I'll talk about how we go about that in just a moment. There is a fine, a penalty and fine schedule with this. First violation is a written warning. Second is a fifty dollar administrative fee, and we only do that if we can verify that we see a spike in the, in the water use that would correlate to irrigating yard, and then subsequent violations are a hundred dollars per violation. We have so far this year issued some written violations for water use outside of the assigned day for any one quadrant. Stage three, I mentioned, I know you've heard a lot of talk about this. We've got to do everything we can to stay away from stage three because stage three eliminates all outdoor watering. At that point in time, we're going to start having, it could have, start having a very significant impact on businesses, especially landscape companies and nurseries. So we want to do all we can to stay away from that. And we are doing some things that I'll, I'll talk to you about here soon that I think are going to help. Stage four goes way beyond that. This plan was put together to help us stretch our public water supply over a period of eight years through a drought, bowl-style drought. I think it's working. I think it's doing its job so far. We're going to get some rain at some point in time, but until we do, we've got to stay the course.
A quick question, Gary. The exemptions for stage two and stage three, are they similar? I know we give, give exemptions for like outdoor watering of food gardens. So are they, are they consistent exemptions in stage two and stage three?
They are the same. For both of those are the same. Yes. And I appreciate you mentioning, I always try to keep that in mind, that we do allow hand watering of outdoor food gardens because not everybody realizes that, and I think that's important to them, that they try to be able to keep that going.
Thank you.
Quadrant map, you've seen this. This has helped us more than anything for people to understand when they can water. Four days a week, northwest is Monday, northeast is Tuesday, southwest is Wednesday, southeast is Thursday, and no watering Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. And again, no watering between ten AM and eight PM. Andover, as direct customers of ours are split at Kellogg's, so they're within northeast and southeast. So this applies to everybody. Everybody that gets water from Wichita, residential, commercial customers, this applies to wholesale, all of our wholesale customers, this applies to, these water restrictions apply to every customer that we have. And so, you know, we started out with this, we wanted this to be about education and collaboration, and we still do. It's hard to have the resources to really go after enforcement, but we've got our construction inspectors, our housing inspectors. While they're out, if they see something, they will report that. You know, there's an online app for reporting if the public sees it, and then we'll follow up. And, and last year, I don't have the numbers with me, we did end up administering some fines last year, but again, we're hoping for, based on what we saw with the reduction in usage, I think it worked well without having to go to that point of finding more people for enforcement. So outreach and communication has been very critical. And I talked about the education and collaboration part. We've wanted to provide as much information as we can. You've heard at other workshops, we've had K-State Extension Services here, Sedgwick County Extension Services has been a great resource for us. They talk about proper watering and lawn care. You've heard me talk about this before in others. Nobody's yard needs to be watered seven days a week. In fact, it's not good for the yard. It's detrimental to the root system. And so if people that were doing that, that continue to do that, if you go into drought restrictions, it can cause even more issues for them. So we were trying to encourage people before we even got to this point to kind of change their ways. It really needs to be a change of culture, I think, going forward. We, on the left side of this, there's a lot of information about irrigation education. I mentioned our internal conservation plan. It's got information about our rebate program. We thought it was important to have this dashboard for Cheney up here so everybody understands just where we're at, that, that Cheney Reservoir is still low. There's resources on the right side. Our restrictions do not apply to those with a well, but they are required to have a well sign. We do provide a printable well sign for those who need them. I do get asked that question again, but as of the way that the drought response plan was crafted, it does not apply to those with well water. So we've got a lot of really great information here. We continue to promote this and make sure everybody understands what resources are out there. You know, one of the things we dealt with, especially as the onset of stage two, was HOA covenants, right? So HOA covenants do not take precedent over local ordinance. So we spent a lot of time with outreach to HOA management, whoever sees a lot of the HOAs in Wichita, specific HOA, specific HOAs and their boards. I'm going to go to HOA management next Friday with staff and talk to them. They're going to have K-State Extension Services there to remind everybody where we're at. So we had a lot of communication since last August about what can and can be done, what should be done with HOAs, but the fact of the matter is they all have to comply the same way. So we've had some good conversations with them. I've got a meeting Thursday night with an HOA to talk about this some more.
Gary, can I just make a comment real quick? I just want to applaud you. I had my breakfast a couple of weeks ago and you did a presentation and we had several HOA presidents there, and they've reached out and we're getting things planned. And then we do have one on Thursday, as you mentioned. So I know it's taking a lot of your time and usually, you know, it's weekends and evenings, so thank you for doing that. The other thing, and, and if it's in here in the future, I missed it, I'm sorry, but we went to WABA and the Wichita Area Builders Association and even have been trying to be proactive in talking with them about future buildings and developments that they're building to see if, you know, they can even get kind of ahead of it and plant native, native plantings and, and things that would utilize less water, if you will. So just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you and your team for really being proactive in this situation. So thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate your support because you've been a lot of these meetings with me. The WABA conversation's coming up, so, so I'll reinforce what you talked about. Everybody's familiar with Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project. That is still a very, very vital part of our drought response plan. Because of ASR, the aquifer is ninety-two percent full. It's probably pretty remarkable considering the drought that we're in because the Little Ark River is not always running to a point that we can capture water and, and treat it and recharge the groundwater, but that's been a result of some really tremendous long-term planning and investment by the city. We've got some funding from BOR. We are currently utilizing to build two new recharge basins. Recharge basins are more effective to find the hard-to-reach spots within an aquifer to keep it full and keep it healthy. So this is going to bring even more value to us. So that's part of our, our overall planning. So I want to talk about a new water treatment plant. You've heard some of this recently, but I'm going to hit through real quick on where we're at with schedule, what's coming next, so that we know when we get to the point of realizing the benefit of this plant. As you know, the state-of-the-art facility will eventually enable flexibility and water supply choices during the drought. It is feasible. At some point in time, if water's not available from Cheney, we could treat a hundred percent groundwater through this plant, which we do not have the flexibility to do now. That would not be done on a regular basis. There's a lot of reasons why it makes sense for us to still balance our water use, but it is going to provide a lot of flexibility. That's why we need to keep pushing forward, get this plant operational, have it start providing water to the system so we can add that to our toolbox for things that we can do to respond to the drought. So I want to talk about where we're at. We are projected to take ownership in April. The performance and acceptance testing is happening now, and, and we're gaining on it, getting closer. The Wichita Water Partners is required to, to provide spec water, meaning that they meet everything required by regulations, and they're gaining on that. We would expect certainly within the next thirty days, hopefully sooner, that we will take ownership of this plant. There will be some time period after that, the KDHE will have to provide the operational permit so that we can actually run this plant the way it's intended, and then have the opportunity to put water into the system. We probably won't be ready quite at that point, but that's one of the next steps. So continuation of testing and water disposal necessary for our staff to fully operate the plant and to ensure regulatory compliance and consistent production of safe water before delivering to the system will be necessary. So as you know, with the testing right now, the test water is going into the floodway. I know all of you have heard about that. We hear about that often. We've got some information on our website, we're about frequently asked questions. It is a necessary part of making sure that this plant can provide safe cleaning, drinking water to five hundred thousand people, that we don't, that we limit our risk when we bring this online. It's not really different than, than anything else we do with a lot of our facilities. It's visible, obviously, that that water's going to the floodway. We're getting ready to change that here soon, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. I'll tell you what is happening with that water that's going to the floodway. Some of it is helping to recharge the aquifer in northwest Wichita, but the rest of that water makes its way all the way down the floodway and back into the Big Ark River. Doesn't necessarily allow us to utilize that as a water source, but it is making its way downstream where others will be able to utilize that for the same, same reason that we are. Here soon, we're going to be shifting the test water to the new pipeline, which I talked about on Tuesday night, last Tuesday night, when we talked about the warranties, that's one of the last things we've got to do. Once we get the final repairs on that pipeline done, the disinfection done, we're going to switch that test water going to that pipeline, which will, which is where it's going to be eventually when it gets to Hess, to go to the system. We are developing a plan for creating a fill station near Hess Palm Station. We had talked about this in the past. Didn't have the opportunities we wanted to early on to capture some of this test water and be able to reuse it, but we are going to be able to do that now. This fill station will, we've talked to Botanica, they will use as much water as they can take. In fact, they're going to the point of purchasing additional tanks, figuring out how water truck can get water to them, which would be a big deal through the summer months for Botanica. We're going to offer this water to contractors to be able to utilize also. We're waiting on one part. Here's our timing mostly. Once we get this pipeline ready, we get it cleaned. Hopefully, we have that fill station running in the next thirty to forty-five days. Then we'll be able to capture that test water that will be going through that pipe. Any that we don't capture will end up in the Ark River, end up at the same place. Our goal is to have the new plant solely providing water to the distribution system by this fall so that we can optimize staffing and cost. I can't give you a pinpoint, a date right now. I wish I could. As Wichita Water Partners is moving through to finish their performance and acceptance testing, showing that they can, they can make spec water. Our staff is there, but we don't have hands-on operations. We can't and we shouldn't. Once they prove out the plant, then we take over, then we set up the screens, then we, then we, then we operate the plant, we take over maintenance. We need time to be able to be comfortable with that, to make sure we can safely operate the plant. There's one more part of this that we just can't seem to win on, but the drought is impacting what's happening right now with being able to bring this new plant online. We had hoped for quite some time that we would run both plants at the same time. So lessen our risk, have current plant putting water into the system, start bringing water into the system from the new plant. Because of the lower demands during the drought restrictions, that's not enough water to operate both plants, long and short of it. We're continuing to look at scenarios to develop a way to start to bring that new plant online as quick as we can, but it, I think it very well could be ninety to a hundred and twenty days. That's why we especially want to be able to capture that test water as much as we can. We're going to push. We need to get all of our staff up to that new plant. We're still struggling to get some people hired, so it'd be good if we can take the old plant offline, bring the new plant online. That is our absolute focus. We're doing everything we can. And I want to, one last quick comment on that. We've got some staff doing some pretty extraordinary things through a highly complex and challenging project. Under Don Henry's leadership and Mike Jacobs, we have made some modifications at our current plant that we have been able to treat more groundwater than we've been able to do in the past. It's not sustainable for very long, but for right now, we are pulling more water from the Equis Beds, taking that stress off of Cheney while we're continuing this testing. We will get to a point here when this plant becomes ours that we will lower the volume of water going through for testing as much as we can and also rely on groundwater there. So we're, we're pulling out all the stops, doing everything we can. Our staff's done a tremendous job, especially still being short of staff at times, but we're going to get there. So keep you updated on how that's going. Really excited about being able to use that test water. This is a lot of stuff. I'll just tell you real quick. What's in green is our wastewater treatment facilities. Blue is our new water treatment plant. The purple at the bottom is what we were doing for reuse already with Spirit. We have an agreement with Spirit from our Plant Two facility. We provide almost a million gallons a day of effluent, treated effluent, reused to Spirit for their cooling purposes, production processes, in lieu of them using potable water. We are undertaking a reuse, reuse feasibility study. We have selected a consultant that will be coming to the council sometime in May. Really excited to move forward, and our focus is going to be really aggressive and robust towards direct potable reuse. And I'll talk about what that is in just a moment. You see, the upper right of this map, there's thirty million gallons a day of treated effluent going to our rivers and streams that we believe we can capture and create an additional water supply for ourselves long term. Big project. It's going to take some time. There's costs associated with it. There's, we have to develop regulations with the state, but I think we'll get there. Last quick comment on this. Right in the middle is the Water Center, Herman Hill Park. That facility treats the contaminated groundwater from Gilbert and Mosley and the Nick areas, million gallons a day. We updated our permit to allow landscaping contractors to also utilize that water. So starting April first, we have been in touch with landscaping contractors and nurseries. If they have the, if they have the ability, typically by water trucks, that they can go get that water for free at no cost to be able to help supplement what they're doing for their businesses, to be able to assist with moving forward with, with the types of landscaping work that they're doing. So that's good, too. So here soon, we're going to have two of those water sources for some period of time. Talk about direct potable reuse, and then I promise I don't have too many slides left. Thank you for bearing with me. There's a lot of information on here, but I like showing people kind of what this looks like. If you start at the upper left, it would be one of our wastewater treatment plants, could be Plant Two or Three. Everything you see in the middle is an advanced treatment process. So that, that wastewater is already treated to drinking water standards, but it's got to go through even more advanced treatment than that, and then that water would go directly to the distribution system. Our average daily demand outside of the drought is fifty million gallons a day. You recall, we've got thirty million gallons a day coming out of our facilities. You can imagine what we could do long term if we could create a water supply that's half of our demand on a regular basis. That's why we're so excited to try to look to this option and stay really focused on direct potable. We could provide a sustainable and resilient water supply truly for generations. I've highlighted funding and state regulations. Those are two big part of it. One other thing, I, so we're going to start working with KDHE right away. There are no state regulations for the state of Kansas for direct potable reuse. We've talked to them. They are on board with this. They want to see this move forward. I think we can make it happen. Funding's going to be a big part of this. There is federal funding available. We've heard from the Bureau of Reclamation already about funding opportunities, so we're going to stay in close contact with them. Community engagement is a really, really big deal, too. Making sure the community understands what it is that we're looking at, what we're doing. I've been making this same spiel already at public meetings. I've had good feedback. The consultant we hired actually has a subconsultant that does PR work specifically related to reuse. So we're excited to have them in here soon and start talking about how we approach this with the public. To Councilmember Tuttle's point, some of the other things that we are looking at, we've had previous discussions with WABA. We're going to be continuing those. I think we have a meeting next week with a smaller group to talk about. We're not unlike a lot of other big cities. You'd be hard pressed to go into new development and not see fescue sod everywhere, right? You'd be hard pressed to go into new development and not see fescue sod everywhere, right? I have encouraged developers, I've challenged them to start looking at more drought resilient developments, doing something different, anything different. I think there's some interest. I hope there is because they're seeing the challenges of this prolonged drought. We've encouraged them to move away from fescue as a default and maybe even consider allowing people to change out their yards. Again, we point to all those resources about effective landscaping, zero escaping, drought tolerant landscaping. We're going to review our ordinance requirements also. Most of our zoning code requirements don't say the type of landscaping you have to use, but they probably should start really encouraging more drought tolerant material in the future. Bottom right picture, a lot of the new developments include a built-in water source. I think we need to start looking at reuse opportunities within those developments. My brother lives in Jacksonville, Florida, in a very large planned development. Every single irrigation system in that development is required by law to be on reuse, so they take the water from their own system and use that for irrigation. I think there's exciting opportunities. We're going to keep WABA engaged and see where we can get to. We have looked at what others are doing. Oklahoma City, after going through a drought for some time and actually had some system issues, led them to every other day water. If you're on the even side of the street, water on the even days, odd side is odd days. They have kept this in place for some time, I believe. This is something that we maybe want to consider long-term. Even if we came out of this drought tomorrow, I'm not sure that we should ever go back to allowing watering seven days a week. So we're going to be really thinking about those things and coming back to you for more discussion. Wrap this up, stage two restrictions remain in place, expected well into 2025. Those ASR improvements I talked about will be done in 2025. We'll continue to enhance our ability to keep the aquifer full. We're shooting for sole use as our only treatment facility, Wichita Water Works by the end of this year, I think we can still make that. We, I mentioned the reuse RFP consult, that'll be coming in May. Continue discussions with WABA. And then lastly, I mentioned we want to develop revised conservation recommendations going forward. Thank you, that was a lot of information. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions. I appreciate you making the comment about fescue. I know that's been question, or topic that the city has had, I don't know, many years ago. I know specifically when the airport was being redone, they talked about not using fescue and then we planted fescue. But I know I've asked you this before, but I would be curious, it makes me nervous that well users are kind of able to just use whatever whenever. So I would be curious, my concern is that a bunch of people are going to go dig wells, and so I would be curious over the last twelve to eighteen months if we've seen a spike at all in wells being dug.
I'm not sure on the latter question, but I can check into that, but I'll, and this is not, I don't want you to think I know anything about this because it's going to sound relatively smart, but I'm just going to repeat what I heard others say, but I'll tell you real quick how this works. So the local aquifer, the water below us here, is hydraulically connected to the equus bed's well field, right? However, the local aquifer naturally recharges from the Big Ark River, so it just stays, it just stays up, right? It's just even during drought conditions, we don't see a lot of issues. There are some folks in West Wichita who have started to see their wells going dry because overall it's dropping. Our belief is, based on our modeling, that domestic wells have very little impact on the equus beds. To that point, if we were in non-drought conditions, we'd be better off with a lot more wells, domestic wells, we could take a lot of the stress off of cheney. So it's kind of this delicate balance, but overall, we don't believe that wells, we still encourage those with wells. I tell people all the time, I've got a well, I water one day a week and it's fine, my yard looks fine. We still encourage everybody to do the same. It is a source of consternation amongst neighbors, we've heard that. It actually creates more work for us to try to verify who's got a well and who doesn't. Long-term, there is no harm with more wells, but I can get back to you and let you know if we've seen more permits.
Yeah, I would just be curious, I know that's not a cheap thing to do, to dig a well, but I would just be curious what that looks like. And I know this is super wishful thinking, but what is it going to take for us to get out of stage two?
So.
Never, probably never.
Not having been here before, I'll tell you how the plan is set up. The way this plan was crafted was that we would come out of stage two the way we went into it, and we'd have to see the twelve-month running average get back up to the higher number. The plan does allow flexibility to look at other conditions because that's a long period of time. I will, if we stayed with that and cheney filled up next week, it could feasibly be three or four months before we lift restrictions. So I think that's a discussion I'd have to have with the manager and you all to understand when we get to that point, what makes sense. As of right now, we're going to come out of it the same way we went into it, with the twelve-month running average.
Okay. I know I've mentioned this to Bob before, but I am concerned about, I mean, obviously we need to be responsible, but I'm concerned about not planting trees. And so I'd like to at some point continue that conversation to see what we can do, and maybe there's an opportunity with reusing some of the water, maybe there's an opportunity with that, but we all know the best time to plant a tree is twenty years ago, and we have quite a few that we need to plant, so we'd just like to continue to keep that part of the conversation.
And I appreciate that. I think this test water availability probably does change that, potentially change that conversation going forward.
Thank you.
Gary, I have a couple of questions. You say ninety to one hundred and twenty days before we get the new plant fully online? Is that correct?
My hope is, so we have the ability, there's several things, there's multiple things here going on, and I've bored you with enough already, so I won't go into any other complexities on where we hoped we would go and some things didn't work out. We do have the ability to put water directly into the system from Wichita Water Works on-site without going through Hess. It's a smaller amount, that's going to be our first focus. I think we can start, I hope, I shouldn't say I think, my hope, my goal is ninety to one hundred and twenty days to be putting some level of water into the system, correct? We have a lot of things that really are driving us to get this plant, we're going to take ownership of the plant soon regardless. It is in our best interest to get this plant figured out, to make sure we can run it, but we have to be very, very careful, we have to be diligent, that we don't create a risk of bringing this plant online too soon and create any water quality issues. That's the last thing we want to do.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate that. It'd be nice to be able to pull even more water out of the aquifer to avoid going into stage three.
Right, and that's what I had mentioned, that staff found some innovative things on our current plant for a short-term solution that we are, I think we're treating more groundwater at our current plant now than I've ever seen us treat, which is good. As we move forward with our continued operations, learning, understanding the plant, we'll certainly use as much groundwater as we can there too.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Appreciate the innovativeness. Your department has consistently been innovative and I do appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you.
I do want to make a statement about trees too. I do agree with Councilmember Ballard, we do need to plant trees and the best time to plant them was twenty years ago. Would it be possible to take that statement off of our website, not to plant trees? Maybe if you plant trees and you handwater them, they don't need that much water to get a tree established.
If I could interrupt at this point and take that, we've had a lot of discussion about this, and we are putting, Gary and I talked about it as recently as yesterday. We're putting a proposal together for the landscapers. If you read some of the comments from the meeting of the landscapers, one of the biggest problems is that people tend to overwater plant material and trees. In fact, when they have to replace trees, many times because the property owners didn't water appropriately. It's a kind, it's a nuanced message that it's hard for people to understand the difference between their lawn and the trees and the amount of water it takes, but we think in partnership with landscapers and using the water that comes from Herman Hill and now with the new line, that we may be able to come up with a compromise that allows for trees to be planted and the landscapers to take responsibility for the initial watering if they use our water or well water. But that's, we need to sit down with the landscapers and go back and forth to see if we can't find a sweet spot in there where we could at least see some trees planted, but not allow the property owners to water, but instead allow those who understand what it takes to keep trees alive to be responsible for that during some growth period.
Yeah, I appreciate that. May push back a little bit, I'm kind of a do-it-yourself guy, because I like to save money, so I like to plant them myself and then water them myself, and you are correct. Usually when it's died and you dig it back up, there's a pool of water down there, especially on the east side where it's more clay, the water just sits there. I would like to have maybe some plan where people can buy a tree and water it themselves. It's an ideal time to do it because now, if they water the lawn, it's not watering the tree also. So I think, I think it's a good time to plant, even a better time to plant trees.
I do understand that, and I guess we could probably have a polite debate for a long time on this one. I'm really concerned with staring phase three or stage three in the face at some point forward and that if we, the more we send mixed messages, the harder it is for people to understand what it is that will keep us out of going to stage three. And I, again, we can, you know, ultimately the council will decide which direction we go, but I, we take this really seriously in terms of people understanding the severity of the drought and that we're just trying to find some middle ground that will allow us to move forward in a way that is actually similar to what they're doing in Arizona. I learned from some managers just recently about what they've done, and they have requirements that landscapers are required to not just plant the tree, but maintain, provide the water for one to three years in order for, to recognize their water issues and conservation concerns.
I'd just like to echo that. I've been at several of the meetings with WABA and with other conversations about this, and I love trees, I agree, I'd love to see more planting, but every time we've had meetings, the conversation comes up and it seems like a really slippery slope of exemptions. And then, you know, what's a tree? Is it also the bushes that I just planted? And so I have seen firsthand from being involved in these meetings that it's probably better to be as vigilant as we can and offer as few of exemptions as we can, just because of the really critical nature of this issue.
I agree with that, but I think we need to plant some trees. I think homeowners need to be able to plant some trees. So I think city needs to be able to plant trees. Now, city can get water trucks and go water them, I grant you that, but John Doe that lives on Brown Thrush Lane that, you know, would like to plant a tree, he's got to run, I guess gets buckets of water from the plant to be able to water it, that's not really reasonable for them to do it, but they could handwater it, fill a bucket up out of their hose and handwater it. I just think that would be an option we maybe should think about.
I just would offer real quick, our concern has been the number of requests we get for exemptions and how, and our lack of ability to enforce those. I had somebody request two weeks ago if they could put new sod down, if they had somebody water it from a truck with a well. We talked about it, they gave me an assurance that that's what they would do, because that's what we're talking about. Two days later, they were out there running their irrigation system all day long, watering in that same sod, which is obviously not a truck from a well. That's my concern. We've heard so many requests for exemptions that I can tell by the request that's made to Councilmember Tuttle's point, I don't think there's, I trust you to water your tree with your hose. I'm just a little bit worried of the proliferation of that and that could get out of hand.
Quick question, Gary. If someone, let's say were to do it, purchase a tree, water the tree and water it correctly, would that trigger our response where they would go above their average winter consumption? Is that enough to trigger it, or they have to be watering incorrectly?
It's hard to say what their other usage is, so average winter consumption is December through March. It's set at at least six thousand gallons, tier two kicks in at sixty-six hundred gallons, that's the cheney and all that, but it just varies on where they happen to be. We've seen people go into the higher tiers in the past that didn't water outside at all. It's not likely, I'm not the landscape expert here, but to vice mayor's scenario, it's probably not likely you're going to go into separate tier if you're watering the tree by hand.
If you're doing it correctly. I would just say, Bob, I agree with Councilwoman Ballard. I'm interested in your suggestion of how we can make it work. And regarding language, which I think is the vice mayor's question on the page, I don't know how many people are actually visiting our website to get advice on it, but even if there is a link out of, these are drought resistant plants that you're able to purchase, giving people the tools, like, we're no, human nature, people are going to do things, so at least equip them with the knowledge of, right now it just says, "Don't plant anything." Maybe we put, consult a gardening expert and here are the list of, yeah, here are the list of drought resistant plants that can be planted. That might be helpful where people still feel that they can, you know, if gardening is a thing, but they're doing it responsibly and they're doing it in a way that the city encourages.
We actually have, just in the last, probably it was late last week, we did soften that language on the website, and it does provide a link to some information on, say Wichita Water, about drought tolerant landscaping, and it also talks about discussing with experts. So still very cautionary because to the manager's point of mixed messages, I've been in so many meetings, and if we waver a half an inch in one direction, it gets taken a long way out of context typically, but I get it, you know. We, there was a landscape company and nursery last year that sent out a flyer that says, "We'll help you through the drought. Here's the types of materials." That's what we're trying to encourage folks to do, to help up, step up, help themselves, help us and help the community understand what those things look like.
All right, I got maybe two, and then I'll get to my points about trees as well, so. First, with the wells, when we dig new wells, is there well testing, considering just how many spots we have around the county where the water may be compromised?
It's not testing per se. We've got information on, historical information where we think there might be, but that's up to the company who's drilling the well to verify the quality of the water there.
Okay, so they have some idea where these spots might be?
Yes, correct.
Okay. The equus, the equus bed, if that drains down as a euro, how long does that usually take to recharge, to get back up in the nineties?
It really depends on weather conditions, it depends on how well the Big Ark River is flowing, but it's, you know, not out of question if current conditions persist, and if we don't see spring rains, there's probably going to be more and more people in West Wichita that are struggling to get water in their well most likely. But, you know, our hope is if we can get water upstream, that's what helps us too. Even if it's not raining here, if we get water upstream in the little arc, we can capture it with ASR, and the big arc, it helps to recharge the aquifer.
So if we go at a, like, let's say a fifty-fifty blend, about how long would it take to, for that aquifer to fall below to where we're not comfortable with that anymore?
You're talking about the equus beds?
Yes, the equus beds, I'm sorry.
There are so many factors involved in that, I wish I could give you an answer. I've got staff that does some very complex projections based on that, but it also considers what the weather's doing, whether we're getting normal precipitation or not, what our average use has been, our consumption, our demand is down because of the drought, because of that helps, but there's, it's kind of hard to predict. The equus beds is in good shape, we have water rights per well, but overall, we have not used, we've got forty thousand acre feet of native water rights within the equus beds. Over the last ten years, we've averaged using twenty-five thousand, so I, we've got some capacity, if you will, to still be able to take water from there without having any issues related to our water rights.
About what's the blend that we're thinking when the new water treatment facility is online?
It, not that you want to hear the same answer, but it depends. It's going to depend on where we're at within the drought. If, once we have the new plan online, if cheney's still in a bad spot, we're going to try to focus more on groundwater, certainly. There's a lot of reasons why fifty-fifty blend makes a lot of sense for different processes through the plant, to stay around that area, but right now, I think we've got about sixty percent groundwater going through our current plant, which is more than we've done in the past. That might shift either way, it's just really going to depend. If we start getting, anytime cheney's up, we prefer to use more surface water. When conditions are well, it makes sense to try to keep the equus beds as healthy as we can for a variety of other reasons. So we usually hover around that fifty-fifty, but through this time that we're testing out the plant, we're running it with our people, we're going to run it through different scenarios and different conditions to make sure we understand where we could optimize the operation. to make sure we understand where we can optimize the operations, and that's really where we'll make that decision.
Okay, Gary, if I could also, we're not the only ones that draw out of the Equisbeds. And I do think we have to remember that we have partners that have water rights there and are very concerned about how much water we pull out of that, out of the Equisbeds. And so the Groundwater Management District works, Gary's working with them to make sure that everybody is balancing the amount of water that's pulled out.
Okay, I appreciate that. On to trees, I agree with the other council members so far. I am curious, are rain barrels part of a rebate program?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that might be good to promote that with the nurseries and if people come out to buy trees, maybe they can get the rain barrels to where they can bring it up to the water center and get it refilled. Just in that way, that's, just people understand that process would work a lot better than watering from, you know, specifically their garden hose on a lot of these trees, but...
As of right now, just so you know, because of some requirements with the permit, for some safety reasons, operational aspects, we're only allowing contractors to utilize this test water. However, to your point, that's something we are thinking about, about how that might work best. Because we've had that question asked.
Yeah, they just...
A lot of people have rain barrels with nothing in them, needless to say, so...
Right, yeah, just throw it in the back of the pickup truck and have one or two people to help you unload it when you're done. I think that would, that would help as far as just, because we need to, we just need to stay on the tree thing. I mean, we had this momentum going, and unfortunately, the drought hit. But whatever we can do to keep this going, because there's a lot of spots around the city we saw with the NASA heat map, that we do need to have mature trees coming up the line, especially in the upcoming decade or two. So I just agree with the sentiment so far as to trying to work that around the best we can.
I just wanted to add to the policy discussion that you were talking about. Well, first, great presentation, lots of good information. As you continue to talk with HOAs and like WABA, I respect having the conversation or maybe the sentiment on their end of the word "strongly encourage." But I think, given that we are in stage two, councils in the past have made some tough decisions to keep us in a good space. We all know water is imperative. No development means anything if we don't have water. So if there's a transitional period this year of strongly encourage, I think we need to get to a point where we require drought-resistant planting, whether it's grasses or plants. People might be upset about that, but ultimately, if we don't have water and we get into stage three or stage four, like, all that stuff's going to die anyway. So I know there may be some hesitancy on some of the HOAs and developers, but I think our job is to make sure that we can stretch water as far as possible. So if we could, I think we should get to a point, maybe that's a policy discussion here, where we just require drought-resistant plantings of yards and completely move away from fescue.
I appreciate that. And I would say, along with the direct potable reuse and the reason why we're trying to push so hard on that, right now is the best time ever to have this discussion. I think back in 2013, you've heard me say this and others, that drought was wiped out by two massive rain events. We didn't have a drought response plan at the time, but cheney filled up. Two rain events within about a 10-day period. I suspect probably two weeks later, most of us forgot there ever was a drought. So we need to keep it to the forefront. I could not agree more, and I think there's some things we need to consider now. We've been hearing a lot, I have, from property owners and HOAs, and they don't like their stuff dying. What can they put in that would be, we've referred them to landscape artists, architects. We've had our folks provide some information. We've got our resources on the website. So I think, hopefully, the culture's changing a little bit in that direction, but we need to stay on it.
I just wanted to add, Gary, one of the things that I learned in the Water Reuse Task Force that I think was the most concerning to me is, in the United States, 32 billion, with a B, gallons of municipal wastewater are produced every day, and less than 10% of that is actually reused. So I'm just really excited for Wichita to be the first city in the state to have direct reuse. I don't want us to stop. I want us to keep the momentum. A council member, Holheiser, on his task force, and we've heard there's only one city in the nation that does direct reuse right now, and I'm sure hopeful that we'll be the first in Kansas and maybe one of the top 10 in the nation. So thank you for all your efforts and to your team for all that they do. It's really appreciated and completely necessary, not just for residents, but also for business and industry. And when we were in Washington, DC, a few weeks ago for the National League of Cities Conference and did hill visits, both Senators Marshall and Moran mentioned water reuse. So thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate both of you being a part of that. And I want to hit on one point real quick that you made that I like to try to keep to the forefront, too. This isn't just so people can keep watering their grass. This is about the future of our city and the ability for us to grow, to help with economic development. If we can't provide water, that's a big deal for businesses who want to come to Wichita, too. So it's all of the above, so thank you for that.
I see no further comments. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
City manager?
Mayor, that's all we have.
We will now conclude workshop. However, there is our special session, so I will read as follow. I move that the city council recess into executive session for 40 minutes to receive information on three actions pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship due to pending litigation and legal advice. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest. In addition, can I do it consecutively?
I'd like to take that motion, vote first.
Second.
So I move to approve that. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, 7-0. I will read the second motion. I move that the city council recess into executive session for 20 minutes with property management staff pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for the preliminary discussions of the acquisition of real property. The executive session is required to protect the city's financial interests and bargaining position.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, 7-0. So this will be a total of one hour. And right now, it is almost 11:00. We'll take a short, tiny break, and we'll begin at 11 o'clock. Thank you.